And unmute?
We're unmuted.
Okay, all right, we're learning how to get all the bushes out. All right, I'd like to begin this meeting, this select board meeting, year 2023. Um, and I'd like to begin as usual with our warrant items. Um, I'd like to to make a motion that we um approve warrant item. A payroll one eleven uh for twenty one thousand six hundred eight dollars and ninety cents. And the reason that one is so large this month is because it um includes stipend for for select board members and um a lot of other. Not you unfortunately, uh we'll get yours next week, but um so it's a lot bigger than normal. So do I have a second?
Sure.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we uh accept uh warrant item or payroll accounts payable one hundred and twelve. Um, the amount is three thousand three hundred ninety dollars and thirty seven cents. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of uh June twelfth nineteen twenty two. Twenty twenty three uh for a select board meeting, uh do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, hi. Um, I'd like to go to citizens issues, do I have any issues from citizens here or there?
So.
Nope, all right.
Um. Just so we have online uh April. Who's not feeling well, it's just why she's she's not here, we're coming out of a cold, but we got Julie. Uh, and I think that is it.
Okay, um Rhodes, anything for Rhodes?
Ready to pavement, and I'll be getting with expecting to call from Amy at progress model. About their time on uh as far as our end, we're ready. We're ready for them, what's where it's been done.
Great.
Yes. I got Julie.
Okay, great. Uh, anything for correspondence? It was a rather quiet week except for if you wanna talk of repair briefly about the correspondence, but I have no other party.
Yeah, that's true.
Why gave me that chair?
Thank you so much. Uh, okay. We uh last week uh the longer bodies came over their turning to talk about uh the uh violation uh they had an uh building permit. Uh, and the Board of Appeals uh denied them a variance, um so it falls then to the select board to uh take enforcement action. We essentially declined to do that last week, oh we wanted to first uh one to discuss it with Gary. Um, Richardson, good enforcement officer, as well as with their town attorney. And so Gary should be back this week from of his fishing trip.
In Alaska.
And uh so we'll hopefully get the benefits, his his advice uh did email uh with our town attorney, uh Jim Cassaficus. Uh, and uh but the gist of it is partially we uh we don't have like a a precedent uh of this sort, um we've gone through this this process. Um, but the longer parties were original proposals basically for us to give them, in fact, a letter of no action, we the town would not take an action against the violation. And that would enable them to go forward. We're not comfortable to do that, we wanna go through and follow a process uh that uh make sure that uh it seems we're enforcing our ordinances. And um so that's the reason for for uh trying to get the the timing, attorney involved, to make sure we don't go off in a direction that uh will hurt the town in terms of our ability to to do the enforcement. Uh, so at this point, uh Jim has been apprised of the the meeting, and apprised of the the Board of Appeals uh finding findings of fact. Uh, he's seen what the longer parties and their attorney proposed, uh and uh he's doing a little bit more more late work to see what the might be precedences. His his, I'll say his recommendation is um to uh not try to drive this to a full uh uh you know, the full resolution would be they have to remove the garage. And uh, it's just that's probably, you probably don't wanna do that. Uh, but beyond that, uh we've got a lot of leeway then, uh but he understands again, the 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 key point we we expressed last week, we wanna make sure we're enforcing the ordinances and people know that they can't uh the 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 ordinances get broken and and uh and they can't uh there's no cost, there should be some consequences for uh for violating the ordinances. So that's that's where that stands, so we're still still more to do. I think you told uh Peter Drum, we haven't been doing it further at this meeting, so they have to come to this meeting.
Yeah, I've asked him not to do anymore.
But I I did wanna make sure that we we kind of up updated ourselves as to where we stand on that. And this may still be around, it probably will likely be around an issue when you join us, so. Yeah. Any any, just a a any questions anyone?
I'm curious about what would, what happens with this? I assume what happened was just the owner's statement. And if the police said, oh, it was expressed last month, out of last week. How was that, how was that? How was that the owner's fault? If he hires a professional to do it, and the professional shrews out, how was that the landowner's fault? Curious.
Well, the the Board of Appeals didn't have to identify responsibility, so so they they so they don't, didn't speak to that. Well, I should, so we don't know. Uh, and certainly the longer bodies presented it as being someone else's fault. The key fact we talked about last week was that uh there was a plan attached to the the building permit. That plan laid out where the built the garage needed to be to meet the forty foot setback, and there was also a wellhead on that plan. What has been built is not consistent with the wellhead. So that they did not build it in the right place, but they had a plan. And 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 usually again, what we we do is we rely on people to build to their plan, they don't build to their plan.
But is it their fault or is it the contract?
We we don't know. We don't know, and and so so we don't have no responsibility, so what our process, I I get it, I don't know what the attorney's gonna recommend, but my guess is the the attorney's gonna recommend some sort of process, where we do try to identify some some responsibility.
No, I yeah, I mean, I've got a couple of things coming up in the future, I'll do that. I might be building, and I'd just like to know. What? If I'm not relying, will be screwed up, that doesn't does.
Doesn't feel well.
No, not at all.
Yeah.
I shouldn't have to double check again.
Yeah.
Oh, whatever. I'm just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, the uh let me just look at there. Because we 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 really do need to be careful, and I wanna make sure we we stay in good uh uh good state of what advice tomorrow attorney.
May I be recognized? May I be recognized? I just have a question. Um. How do we proceed forward so that if in the future every time a the Board of Appeals, which is the ruling body on um an issue makes a decision that denies in a a variance or anything? That that decision will always will be final in the future? Or will everybody, if there is a change or a variance to the Board of Appeals decision, so that every time they someone doesn't like a Board of Appeals decision, they will now come to the select board going forward and say, I want this overruled?
Julie, uh they're not questioning the Board of Appeals decision. That's not a question, War Appeals has ruled, uh they they've denied the variance, so a violation it it stands. And and that's where we're at. And and so so I, there's no question about overruling the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals decision stands. Unless the longer brothers want to take them to court. Yeah, I'm I'm done, I think with that.
Okay.
That update.
Um, admin items, the only thing I have right here is to set July uh select board meeting schedule, and actually I'd like to postpone that until uh we have a new board, I think we need to meet. Anybody got a calendar handy?
Donna. Donna, the reason um I was asking, I'm actually a little bit late on this, this month, but the um newspapers like to know uh quite a bit ahead of time, and the only one that I think is questionable is the one that's like, I don't know, is it next week or the week after, close to July?
Yeah, yeah, July third.
Um, so if you're gonna stay with your usual Monday schedule, I guess my only question is, do you wanna skip July third? And if we could decide that tonight, that would allow me to get it over to the LCN.
What does that look like to you, Julie?
I I would actually like to have a, July three would be a good time to meet, if 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 we're, if that's acceptable for the board to meet, partially because that's a good time for us, and we go through all the appointments, so it's really kind of, it's kind of the getting organized for the year meeting.
Yep.
Or you could give me another week to get the appointments in line. Just say.
Well, I mean.
Probably, I'm sure I can have it ready by the third, if I have to.
I I think if we did the third, you know, it doesn't have to be a long one, but it could be just to sort of even to get us started on the right foot. Um, so yeah, let's plan for um Mondays, and if that changes, at least we have um a good tentative schedule going.
Okay.
And I think we'd also like to plan to do the six o'clock um um workshop.
Yep.
And then um, you know, I I'd like to revisit the Wednesday workshops, but um but I know the most important thing right now is is the um select board meeting, so let's go with those for Monday evenings. And then we'll see whether Wednesday afternoon works, or we choose something else.
Okay. Jeff, um Jeff had asked me to update on preparations for town meeting, do you want me to do that now, Jeff?
Yes, perfect.
Great. Um, yeah, everything is um rolling along, we have the annual report printed, um I got the warrants printed today, I'll pick them up tomorrow. Um, the moderator is booked, uh the chairs are set up, and there's there's not as much to do as there was for the election, so I'm sort of like, you know, being like, there's gotta be something else, but um yeah, I have some good checklists I inherited from Julie and the MMA manual, and Gay has been great answering questions, and um, you know, I think we are ready. Or will be in time at least, so.
Uh, the broadband committee uh met earlier this evening and would like an opportunity to uh briefly report uh to the town meeting on the status of broadband, um and also with a with a request for some input. Uh, and looking at the uh warrant, a good time for them to, so there's no, there's no broadband article on the warrant this year. Uh, but after the Article twenty eight, which is about the town website, might be a good time, if we could ask the moderator to allow for that. Uh, the the Jason Kates uh chair of that committee could uh could make the statement for the for the committee.
Okay. And I remember from previous town meetings I've attended, um often like Stacy will report for the fire department. So I don't have those like lined up in an agenda in any way at this point, do should we um be sort of looking at those ahead of time and making sure we have them penciled in for the moderator to recognize people? And this is something.
The, I think they typically come up when their item, their items come up, their articles come up, and I know that Stacy, the other day when we were talking about the various articles, you know, he's gonna wanna talk about adding that that new um the new sixty five thousand, sixty five, thirty five, I just doubled it on well. Um, he'll wanna talk about that, and that would be the perfect time to do so, because you know, I I think that the town doesn't wanna just hear, you know, we got thirty five thousand dollars that we wanna add, but uh for him to be able to explain why that's gonna happen, so I think that those sort of come up naturally um without people to say that um, you know, we now have to have Stacy talk or something.
Yeah, that's that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they'll just raise their hands when, if they wanna speak, I don't have to get it all.
That's right.
Okay.
Cause they they've got their their gen item with the article.
Yeah.
Right, and.
Oh, uh, go ahead, April, and then Julie.
Yep, uh Julie and I are probably about to speak to the same thing, Donna, I I don't think I got an answer from you today, but Julie was asking about preparing um a handout, and what I had suggested to you is maybe it would be enough for Julie to simply give her um stump speech she's been giving at the um select board meetings about the the many new things in the ordinance, which I find pretty informative. Rather than printing out another piece of paper, it's already a lot of paper we're handing out. Um, but yeah, I.
Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't see the um email, so I apologize, cause I hadn't been home part of the day, um. It was me who suggested she do the handout, just a a simple one pager because she had so much information. Um, Julie, which are you more comfortable doing? Or and which one do you think will be the most helpful for for people?
I honestly think we can do something, but the ordinance, to go through the ordinance and say, these are the changes, I think it would be best to address them in person versus writing it out, because the or we changed the complete order of things in the ordinance, so to really read it side by side and say, we changed this here and this here, it was very difficult to do the strike throughs. Because.
Thinking that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it's.
Five bullet points or something.
I think it'd be easier just to speak to it. Um, it's also less paper. Um, and it's very simple, the five, the five bullet points is, we added in enforcement, we added in three day licenses.
Yep.
And we changed the dates.
Yep, 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 so that's, that's what we need, um is those bullet points, cause I know you went through, you know, a massive document and changed a ton, and that's not what the town needs, they need to know just what you said, those bullet points.
And I think it's easier to say, speak to those than to have people read those, because I think it sounds more appealing to people when we talk about it and say, we made the dates easier so that it corresponds with the town fiscal year, and makes it easier for the town clerk to report. We gave three day licenses, and then we can answer that questions to that, and we put in more enforcement to help with our conservation.
Yeah, yeah, and and leaving it like it that, that that is perfect, yeah, yeah, we don't wanna go through all the 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 minutia. Um, because somebody who's not on the selfish commen- committee, or who has done, you know, all that fine work that you have um needs to, needs to see the big picture changes, so that's perfect, so yeah, no, no hand up.
I think that's better.
Okay, yep, that's fine.
I also wanna save the, save the planet with all the trees, let's not have more paper.
Yep, yep, well, I use them in my wood stove in the winter, so uh I was gonna collect them off. All right, um, anything else, April?
Uh, not that I can think of.
Okay, um, we have under legal business, um, we have uh to talk about some strategies, I'm calling them strategies rather than policy, on how to deal with healthcare.
Before we do that, can we get back a little bit, let's just take.
Yes, to to just give a very brief update on um Wednesday uh conversation.
So uh the the Baker Road issue, we've been leading into a mediation session uh with the other party, and we had that last Wednesday, we came out of that mediation very surprised with what it looks like an agreement. Not gonna say much, anything more about that until the agreement gets signed. Uh, but the agreement would uh resolve the matter in a way that we feel the town will appreciate. Um, so at least for the road, doesn't help the others, but at least for the road.
And if you've driven by there, you actually should see a few changes.
Yeah, so I guess that's sort of good news, but we're not gonna be able to say too much more until we, until we actually have the the signed agreement. And it will get registered with the court, um so at that point, it becomes something that we can enforce.
The only thing I've noticed, I drive by and sign the whole road, so.
So so.
That's a, that's a positive sign, though, that means it's in the middle of the road, because the road used to be at the edge of where that sign is.
So Jim, can we move that sign and and put it not on Albert's property, but put it over on the Stewart's side of the road?
And just make it disappear?
Well, we need a sign, we need a sign. So we can't, we can't get it in?
Well, what, is the town, if something gets that sign? They haven't been put it there. I know it's the town sign, oh, that goes.
Um, yeah. It it again, it's been moved around, in fact, Albert uh has made indications that he's responsible. So so uh, but no, I, you you're right, it's a concern for being there, cause it's sticking out, on the other hand.
No, I guess.
Yeah.
What if we put it across the street?
That's what we were just asking.
Yeah, like this error of this kind of.
But but it's.
No, I mean, like across the main road, where, so you're driving down the main road, you see it, it's bigger road, kind of like a. Well, ideally, ideally, what should happen is we will get the property back, get the road back, and we can put the sign where it's supposed to be where it originally was, so we're hoping in a couple weeks that might happen. Ideally, it should.
It disappeared.
Yeah, a person disappeared, and then in real magic, they reappear.
Yeah, just like property laws, they appear over there, and then they appear over here. There's no problem moving the sign, but he's got that pile of dirt there, and so then you can have a pile of dirt in the road. And I feel it's really up to him, he moved it, he can move it back, yeah.
I think we need to just give it a couple weeks and see what happens, just saying, and um, people have been going around the sign, and they keep going around the sign for a couple weeks, I I I wouldn't want anybody to get.
Me moving the sign, great, I'm not looking at it.
It, yeah. I I understand, it's just.
Yeah, let's just do this.
Uh, I I will also report, I think this is public, uh that I talked with one of the chief deputies in the sheriff's department, he had gone down and made a visit. Uh, part of that was to to ascertain whether the road was blocked enough that emergency vehicles couldn't get through, but as time he went down, uh the obstructions, and we went back far enough, the an ambulance could get through. So that was one of our concerns coming out of a fire department meeting a couple weeks ago, was that we we could actually get a vehicle through. Um, and that's when it escalated to the sheriff, well, the sheriff has taken action, uh at least to 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 talk to the party involved. Uh, and so now you, at least, at least vehicles can get through. Uh, but you're you're right to be concerned about the sign being on the road. Uh, it.
Well, it's, you know, obvious, someone did this.
Well, a week ago, though, it wasn't obvious, because it was, the property line was there, it was almost part of, part of what he considered as property. So if it's now standing in the middle of the road, that means he's moved his property back, then. So we're we're gonna just sit back and
Yeah.
Give it a little bit of time and patience while he uh finds some, that's what we need to put in.
The brothers maybe end up taking in front of this.
Yeah.
Action. Uh, it's true, I think.
No, that is the the concern, and we've expressed that in in as part of the the discussions with the our attorneys, is that uh it's another reason why we're trying to move carefully, because we don't wanna get things spun and have it go in a different direction. So trying to deal gingerly, but but again, uh it is what it is, we we just, we're mindful of the fact that with with the road no longer becomes the playing thing, your butter's property lines may be in danger.
That's a whole nother deal, but the environment don't really wanna get down there and move the sign, because I see bad things on the horizon.
That was a very good meeting, surprisingly good meeting, uh I think, so we're we're just gonna be patient for a couple weeks longer, see what happens with that.
Um, on that note, maybe um, we did have the the uh draft agreement from uh our attorneys, and we haven't responded. Uh, don't know that he needed to have us to respond. Um, but maybe we could formally, I I'll I'll move that we uh accept their their the proposed document.
I would second that.
Okay. Now, all the all.
All in favor?
Great, and we can formally say back uh that uh we're good with that agreement, it still has to go back to the other, the other attorney and and for the other party that is, who also agree. Um, but just to say, from what what we what we saw, it it meets the the town's needs.
All right, any other items, we have, we need to talk about um healthcare, uh some, some ways that we might um share with the town um some thinking about the the healthcare plans, and that that's has been a new issue that's come up, and I mean, uh one of the things we wanted to just talk about briefly, and um so, um, any thoughts on?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so are they gonna be working thirty two hours?
No.
Isn't that typical for healthcare benefits is full time?
It, it actually, I have it in the other room, but act that that is not true typically for town building, uh for town employees, yeah, um but you're right, it's actually, in some places, it's forty hours, thirty five hours, thirty two hours. Um, but. Yeah, and in a lot of places, the um health benefits, the amount of health benefits you get paid for depends on the number of hours, so even at twenty hours, you can get some health benefits in some places. Um. It has been a huge issue across the state, um and I had heard one time there were like two hundred openings, they're now like more like six hundred openings. Um, they're not able to find um employees, um and so, um, and it's and it's a huge issue for for our staff, so. So we wanted to look at some some possible um ways um that we could sort of look at how we might pay um out those benefits. And um, I've got, I've got the other paperwork, I'm gonna go get it.
Can I ask one other question too, cause I think the last thing you said, everyone's getting a pay increase of four point eight percent? And so is that, that four point eight percent counting the health benefits, or is that on?
No, that's totally.
Set aside, so they get like, yeah, benefits of twenty thousand dollars and and a four point eight percent raise?
Right, right, everybody gets a four point eight percent.
Even the employees that have only been here for four months?
Yep, everybody except actually um us, yeah, we did not put in for, sorry about that. But um, there was one for um, I'm gonna go out for one second, I know we have a meeting.
If you got some other questions, please.
Actually, there's something. So we're looking at some of the, oh god, where is it in this bag? Um, we're looking at what MMA offers, MMA is one of the might be right on, it's Stafford here. No? Yep, let's get right here, sorry about that, um. Like, looking at some of the things that MMA offers, which is the main municipal association, what they offer for um for healthcare, and um and also looking at um different towns and what they're offering. And many of the towns um that we're looking at, especially of light sizes, we're not looking at places like Portland or whatever else, because they already have health benefits, um but the smaller towns and what they're doing. And so um most of those towns are paying at least a hundred percent for the self um for the individual employee, and then they're paying a portion of um for either employee with children or uh family, and family is pretty expensive. Um, it's amazing how uh employee with spouses is bad as. And family is pretty expensive. Um, it's amazing how, uh, employee with spouses is bad as employee with children. Why is that? Looking at you guys there. Um, anyway, um, so I think we had put in the budget of, what was it, sixty five? Sixty one thousand? Yeah, that's not what I was playing with. Sixty one thousand. So we were trying to look at the the possibility, um, in just having something that we put out for for, um, the town for Saturday, um, to look at paying full benefits for, um, self and then a portion of the benefits for, um, for family. Um, and that's pretty much in line with a lot, a lot of what the other towns are doing. Um, and again, there's self that it varies whether you're gonna get, um, depends how much deductible you have. There's everywhere from, I think, two hundred dollars deductible for twenty five hundred dollars deductible per person. So if you have a family of four, then that means, you know, ten thousand dollars that you have to fork out, um, could potentially fork out.
That's not including home insurance or copays.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, and some of those, actually, thank you for bringing that up. Um, and some of them that then they have like eighty percent. And so you still have, if you have something catastrophic happen and you have to pay twenty percent of the bill, then you're still in pretty bad shape.
Can I ask, who, what carrier are you going with?
This, this, we're looking at through MMA and, um, and we're not necessarily looking to pay the insurance. We're also looking at, and this is what I think our conversation today is, looking at, I know some towns are like paying, if if you wanna take that insurance, we'll pay up to this amount for whatever insurance you wanna get. So if you wanna go on Marketplace versus, so, you know, wherever you can get it. If you choose not to get the insurance, uh, a lot of the towns are paying like a certain stipend. So let's say you want the insurance and and, um, Adam doesn't, uh, and you're bulk employees that that we would pay you a stipend. Uh, and so, okay, this is what we'll pay you and you have to show us that you're getting insurance. And then for Adam, what we would do is say, okay, we'll give you, uh, forty percent or fifty percent of what and that would go into, you know, if your spouse is getting insurance or whatever else, it trying to equalize things. Um, yeah.
So is that the, that the plan then?
That's what we're talking about.
Someone would be able to pick their own insurance. Cause when I think which carrier are you going for, I mean, like Anthem, Harbor Hill, Brown, Main, you know, Health Options.
Main Municipal offers one and, uh, I know Jeff, you've been looking at some, some.
We we based the analysis on main municipal associations, insurance.
They have insurance.
Yeah, well, this, this, they, yeah, there's a a medical plan. The town already participates in that plan. Uh, we just, a town doesn't pay any of the cost. The employees pay the cost for for it currently. Um, so. Yeah, I just was trying to find some other, some of the files. So what we based the the, uh, 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 analysis on, on what, uh, the MMA's plan costs. Uh, the other point though is if some employee doesn't, would would opt out of that, the practice is that that you give them a portion of of that cost, but they have to show that they got insurance. So if you have a better deal, you show that you have a better deal, fine, uh, we'll give you a portion than what you meant otherwise, yeah. But this is setting up so that we, uh, have the the MMA continue to provide, uh, medical benefits to the town, or now the town will be, uh, contributing to that cost and enabling them. Cause currently no one, no one's paying for, uh, medical because it has been so expensive. Um, and but there have been taking, participating in vision plans on a long-term disability plan. So some of the other plans that the MMA offers. But the medical is is the is the key. Uh, and I think we actually came up with this, was sixty one hundred, sixty one thousand five hundred dollars. And that was based on, um, a, um, covering the, uh, the employee cost, uh, and then a portion that initially could be applied into a family coverage. Uh, and what we actually need to talk about is to is to nail down where we're gonna finalize this. So this is less than an open discussion in terms of looking for the audience. We need to talk. We haven't had a chance to have a, a real discussion about, uh, what, how we wanna set the policy.
But your questions are are fine because they actually make us clarify things as well.
So I, let me get my spreadsheet back up that I was using for this. And at least we can see what we're looking at. Trying to get to, uh, the policy cost. Uh, the other thing that makes sort of a wild card is that there are different plans depending on the employee thinks is best for them. Uh, the plan is just like you probably do for your own medical. You have like a deductible that you have to meet. Well, that that varies. And so if you go for a high deductible, lower cost per month. Um, so that's part of the the thing that that, uh, it's you leave it up to the employee to decide how they wanna, what they wanna do. Uh, how much they wanna, uh, to to, uh, pay monthly versus, uh, with a deductible.
Which would mean a varying cost potentially for the town?
Uh, the talent say, uh, this is what, this is what we'll pay. That's what we 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 need to nail. This is what we'll we'll pay. And they can then can choose how they
Up to as we typically say.
So so I, and again, as as I think as I'm saying, we, uh, did do, uh, a fair amount of sort of research to find out what other towns were doing. Uh, and some of that's difficult because you get an incomplete answer back when you ask somebody. Say, yeah, we provide benefits. Well, how much are you providing? Uh, so got a few specifics, uh, and one of the specifics was from Alma, again, similar sized town. We know that they've got some same challenges in terms of having to hire a, a town clerk and treasurer of this year. What they ended up doing is they're paying their town clerk slash treasurer, um, a substantial amount, about sixty thousand a year. And on top of that, they're giving them fifty hundred dollars a month to pay for the medical, for them themselves.
And they work part-time as well?
No, they're close. They're they're thirty, thirty. Twenty five, okay. Let me go back and peek. I have, I have that email from, uh.
Yeah, it was twenty five.
But it wasn't a matter of the hours. It was a matter of their their coverage and what they're paying. That's the other thing because most towns, uh, our smaller towns don't have people who work forty hours. And it's more commonly in the in ballpark of twenty to thirty two.
It looks like the main municipal help, uh, employees' health trust goes through Anthem.
MMA. But we're not talking to them, talking to them.
Right. No, I understand that. It's just, but they're gonna pay a copay. They might have a pre decided contracted amount that they're going to pay with Anthem.
Right. Yeah, yeah, which is sort of the behind the.
Yeah, behind this. Yeah, yeah.
But there were a couple from, um, I think April or T D.
Today?
At least the past day or two, and that's where I saw the twenty five.
Okay, I did not.
I don't think I've sent any emails about this.
Maybe it was Dee Dee. I remember seeing something this afternoon. Uh, the other question for, uh, that Jeff and I have been tossing around in Ross when he's here is, um, what constitutes full time? Cause you asked the question, Bailey, thirty five hours. For some places it's thirty five hours, others forty hours. For others, it's thirty two hours. It really, there isn't consistency. There is always a difference. Exactly, exactly. Um, so if if you take a portion, and that's where Jeff and I didn't necessarily agree, um, we chose to not agree, um, was where, um, where I felt like be because where most towns don't have full time, it felt like at least no higher than thirty five, something like full time. If anybody ever worked thirty five hours, I'd say it'd be much considered full time, sure. Um, and if we did a portion, let's say somebody works, um, twenty hours, twenty out of that thirty five, four sevenths, um, that that's a portion that we would pay above and beyond for their, um, family. Um, so I would minimally want to go with thirty five, if not down to thirty two. Um, but again, it's something that we need to talk about so that then we can. And did he say anything?
This is, uh, the the staff works thirty, twenty five.
Oh, you figured out what the staff works.
The, uh, couple of staffers, the staff do pay for the health benefits and plans of the MMA that they pay for their own pockets. Do pay a stipend of fifty hundred to our town clerk to have medical benefits. This is based loosely on the attached break sheet that's in the mass sheet to cover for the the individual.
And here's a, here's a, this, this is a response from the town clerk from Alma. My pay is based on twenty five hours a week. Um, I'm paid a set salary weekly with an additional monthly stipend which I can use to purchase health insurance. The town, sixty thousand dollars of annual town meeting in March for that position, and I'm paid fifty seven thousand. Which is a lot more than. So, so I I think for an agreement that we wanna pay a hundred percent of any, uh, of, um, that we wanna, it's what we wanna propose. We can't say anything. It's what we wanna do at health town. And I'm sorry you guys are having this. It's just, that's the power here. Good learning for everybody, right? And very different from what businesses do. Maybe that's why you don't have any towns people working.
Yeah, I I did. We saw this last year that Bristol, um, went to and changed the, actually get their that as we were looking around and started other teams, that's what they're, and as I've said, the MMA has reported that the vacancies in the city is decided.
What is the experience of a, of a staff?
This is, this is new hire.
Is all this new?
But I don't know how much, how many years of experience they have before they're hired.
But what she was a brand new town clerk?
This is, this is, this is again how they were able to, this, they, they actually had a totally, hired someone, hired somebody. This is how they're able to keep it, which is why, why meeting, which our salary is almost like, and paying for their.
Hey Jeff, the sound quality, um, isn't great right now.
Okay.
I don't know if anything changed, but it just kinda went downhill.
Bailey in the background.
A little bit, like some words.
Thanks for letting us know. Yeah, so the situation in Alma, I think Bailey, is that somebody quit and then they try to get somebody else and couldn't. And so wound up hiring the same person back at a higher salary. And then I think she quit anyway and then started over again. So, you know, you can imagine what that does for a town trying to have any kind of consistency. Um, and we're trying to avoid that. And and I I will also say, and I'll say this Saturday too, that, um, the first hire we had for a town clerk, um, who we we all three agreed on, um, wound up not taking the job simply because of health benefits, the lack of. Um, and so it is, it's pretty important. It's important to people who have families, um. It's important to those of us who don't have families because if if you don't have insurance, it's and something happens, it's, um, catastrophic. So, um, so I feel like we're agreeing, or at least I'm agreeing, my with myself, it seems like, a hundred percent employee support.
No, I I, yeah, I think that is the, uh, the 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 key objective is to provide the benefits that that are needed by the town staff. What for the itself, the difficulty is the, our town staff, and indeed, uh, probably not uniquely have have children.
Exactly. So we need to figure out what what we're gonna do about the family.
That's right. And how to provide, um, some amount of coverage, um, for family.
So let let me just give you guys a, a, an example. So, uh, employee only, let's say with a five hundred dollar deductible is a little over a thousand dollars, a thousand ninety seven per month. But if you go with the family, it's twenty four sixty one, over double the amount, um, which is what you know, at least two thirds of the 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 employees need. Um, and that's what five hundred dollars deductible, which isn't bad. And I don't know with this, um, I haven't done the research on this, but see, and and maybe the rest of the staff has, but, um, I don't know what happens. Is that like after you pay that five hundred dollars, is it eighty, twenty percent?
Yeah, that's usually what it is. You have to, you pay the full amount up until the point you reach your deductible. And then at that point, they kick, the benefits kick in of eighty twenty, or unless there's copays or.
Yeah, it it, yeah, it really depends. And I know for me, I didn't like the eighty twenty. I didn't have a choice, but, um, that felt uncomfortable because of if I'm gonna need insurance, it's gonna be something critical probably. Um, April, did, did you check out, do you know what the family is? Um, are 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 these eighty twenties?
Um, no, I haven't delved into it too deeply. Last I saw it, um, when Ashley was providing that information, I believe it was a twenty percent um, co-insurance. Yeah.
Most insurances though have a maximum out of pocket. So there's, if you get to the point where you've spent, let's say it's ten thousand dollars.
Yep.
That's it for the year. Everything on that's free for the remainder of the year. So it's not.
Yep, yep. It's not like you're forever.
Right, forever getting just one percent.
Yeah, it depends on the insurance. Cause I know where some families have just been wiped out when somebody gets cancer or something. How about if I go get Ashley?
I I don't know that we wanna do that.
Okay.
So let me, I I'm going back to the notes I put together after talking with, uh, Debbie Bridge, uh, from the MMA. Uh, again, it varies by the plan. So you pay out of pocket until you meet the deductible. Then you pay twenty percent. The plan pays eighty, up to a maximum amount, uh, out of pocket. At which point the plan pays a hundred percent.
Well, it's a maximum. Does that vary too?
It varies by the plan. That's, that's, that's the point. Um, and, um, so if you're willing to, you don't think you're gonna get, gonna get sick, you don't need to worry about that, then you go with the, uh, the other point that she made was that, uh, we should plan on premiums going up sixty eight percent, uh, for next, the next calendar year.
That was six to eight percent, sixty eight percent. Sounded like sixty eight percent.
Good, okay. I'll slow down, six to eight percent.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. That's a, that's a bit of a jump.
No, not the question though.
Yeah.
Nowadays.
Yeah, and again, just the, the, the practice normally is that employee opts out because they wanna stay on a spouse's plan. Uh, they can be offered a proportion of the cost of the plan.
But it doesn't have to be offered.
Well, uh, it's trying to be. Well, uh, it's trying to be equitable, once we say you're 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 eligible for benefits. Then if someone says, gee, I don't want to be part of this plan that you're making available. Uh, we we don't have to pay them the full amount that everybody else is, they have to have medical treats. They have to show that they have insurance, but we can pay them a portion of of what the otherwise would be the benefit.
I understand you can, but I'm just saying, from a taxpayer's point of view, do we have to?
Do we have to? I think we do.
Legally, we have to, or is it just like?
I think it's a nice.
Based on your contents.
That's a good question for Emma.
That's a good question, and and the way I interpret is that that's pretty standard, but you're right, it may not be required. And I don't know how much is required by law, which is what's with the practice. But providing, if we're saying we're gonna provide benefits. Then it goes back to how do they, how does that work for someone who says, gee, I got a better plan?
I got a better plan, sounds like it works out just fine, yeah, but also you're saving money a little bit, or not?
Yeah, right, right.
That's that's kind of the idea.
And if and if the spouse is paying a a big amount, it's coming out of that paycheck instead of your, by giving them a little bit extra, it's helping to. Pay a little bit into that health insurance. Um, do you want to ask MMA if um if that's a requirement?
We can, I. It's more of a deadly question. And and I and I think to Bailey's point, it 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 may not be required in the sense that you have to do it. It's just standard practice uh from a human resources standpoint.
I I think it, if 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 it were me and I and I was the only one not getting benefits, my spouse was getting them, and I might say, oh geez, it. Feels like they're making more than me in a way, even though they're not physically getting anything, I may decide, well geez, I'm gonna go. With benefits and two, and then we're actually, it's more painful because now you have the third employee getting. Um, ta- taking it out for herself or himself instead of um sticking with the spouse, so I think that's. Probably some hard lessons that people have learned and decided to do it that that way to be more equitable.
I'm just trying to think of a firm a taxpayer's point of view.
Uh huh, yep.
But then from taxpayer's point of view, it's what's the cost of losing experience? We've already suffered a lot of loss information this year, we do not want to do, continue doing this. And the fact is, the market is such that people move on. Uh, who, you know, what what can these people do elsewhere in private ministry? Well, they can, they can work for legal practices apparently, that would be an easy uh shift over. And the pay scale there is considerably more than what people get in the town office. We benefit greatly from having people, we benefit from having local people. So it's trying to, I think we do well for the town by re- retaining the knowledge and people with the flexibility to meet the town's needs.
So I'd like to.
Well, let's, let's, I'm not done, I guess, concentrating, so let's keep concentrating, we'll talk. Uh, one of the facts are that uh per the the, I guess, the MMA's guidelines, their plans. Uh, elected officials are eligible. Uh, not likely that those of us on Medicare are gonna, are gonna jump on this.
I'm not old enough for Medicare.
Oh, tough. I shouldn't have assumed. But uh also road commission is eligible. Uh, or purpose rating plan. And indeed, we've had uh in the past, elected officials have participated in the plan, so regardless of the number of hours, they participate in the plan. Hasn't been any town payment, but at least in terms of the insurance, you had access to insurance. But uh, but not for some reason, um school board members. I did get that much out of.
That's interesting.
Being plummy inspected doesn't qualify.
But the. Factor. Um, maybe it was Sue being a.
He was, he was a select board member, never had dropped after.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I again, I I think we're we're agree about paying arts and the cost uh for the uh for the employee. Uh, I guess the question is just how do we address the the family portion, the initial children?
And if we do it by FGE, then I think it should be no, no more than thirty five hours.
Well, the uh again, it's a moving target, as as we we, I guess, heard that Pittsburgh uh. Uh, also approved a new uh set of benefits, and that was the uh, this is what Dee was telling us the other week.
Yeah, I've got them down for a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But in in addition to employee.
And seventy five percent.
That's right.
That's a hundred percent for employees and then seventy five percent for uh for families.
Yeah, so that's what they approved last week.
Yeah. I I would, I could live with that. I wouldn't want any of our folks to go down to Pittsburgh instead of staying here.
Does that mean, instead of, so if you do family, that includes the employee, or that's a separate one, and then there's?
Well, that lines up, for example, if you took, um, let me give you. Yeah, that would, that would be actually an interesting calculation because um the the employee only is one price. But then if you go down to um employee and and family, then you've got double, so we would have to figure out. Because you don't pay the thousand dollars for the individual and then pay, you know, another seventy five percent of this, that that doesn't make sense.
Right.
So we have to do some, I'm sure they have a chart or something to figure that out. Because a family then includes the the individual, yeah. So that would, that would take some calculating.
Yeah. Trying to play around with the numbers.
Seventy percent of twenty four hundred and eighteen hundred? What's that, seventy five percent of twenty four hundred, which is, I think, what you said?
Yep.
Family would be eighteen hundred.
Good, thank you, I was gonna find my calculators too, this is try to do mentally. Um, so eighteen hundred would be, would be clearly pay all the employee and um. Yeah, so we're actually, in that case, it's not a hundred percent of employee and then seventy five, it would be seventy five percent of the family. Yeah. So that's eighteen hundred. For those who want it, and I know we have at least two families here. Well, actually, it doesn't matter, employee and spouse and employee or family are exactly the same.
Same, it doesn't matter, you have ten children or you have two children.
Or you just have a husband.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, so it would be uh basically eighteen hundred. And what's? Eighteen hundred. Actually, that would come pretty close to the sixty one thousand.
So recap that?
Basically, paying seventy five percent of the family plan for all three people, all three employees.
Up to.
And that would cover um fam- whether they took the fam- family plan because the family plan and employee and spouse were the same. So, you know, it still, it still leaves um six hundred dollars every month that comes out for insurance, even though you've got help. Um, just scary what, this is a major issue here in America today. Um, it's scary enough to have it and. Does that sound something we can maybe propose? Couldn't talk more about it, I wanted to.
Well. Yeah, I I I I think uh. It's.
I know people on Saturday will have comments and maybe other ideas, but right now, what we want to do is just have something that we could present to say, this is what we're thinking right now, based on.
Your guess, again, we'll just rest on that, how to do something that uh that.
Has never been done before here.
Well, you know, and again, using uh examples drawn from other towns, but no other town is a good, is a good match, or a fully good match. Uh, for us. And again, to be, to take care of our our staff. Uh, but at the same time, take care of the town finances, what was uh hopefully acceptable. For the sixty one five hundred that we put into the warrant. That was based roughly on covering about, I think it was uh some some proportion of the um. Of the cost of the family plan for all, all three employees. And then from the research finding that most towns start with the foundation being individual being covered. And then some portion for family, and we're sort of adjusting the, trying to adjust the formula uh to reflect that.
I just think it's really critical that we keep our staff, and if somebody leaves, we have to get somebody else. It it's gonna be the same issue unless we can provide something, um especially if towns around us all have benefits and we don't. I mean, ideally, I would like to say, I'd like to offer full benefits to all of them, because we need to keep them. But I know that that won't work for sixty one hundred dollars, sixty one thousand dollars.
I was gonna say, I work at Anthem with Ross Blue Shield, and Anthem with Ross Blue Shield did not offer to pay a hundred percent of the benefits for their employees. And that's the insurance company that they're bought.
Which is why they make so much money and they have, because they're not.
They can, they can make, but yeah, no, it's, I've never ever in my life heard of somebody paying a hundred percent benefits.
Where I worked, we got a hundred percent.
Where'd you work?
Turk, down in Massachusetts.
Where is it?
Turk. Uh, used to be called Technically Educational Research Centers, um now it's just called Turk.
So in Massachusetts though?
What's that?
Turk in Massachusetts?
Yeah, down in Cambridge, uh Massa.
I guess the, put it back on the table, the the regional kind of analysis, um which was paying a proportion of the family plan. Um, for each staff member. And based roughly on the proportion that they work. Um, and that would leave them, they all chose to go for the family plan, having to cover um a portion of the cost.
Well, if we did that, then I would want the FGE to be no more than thirty five hours, and I think you base.
I do.
And we're dealing with towns, not businesses, so.
No, you're right.
And I'm looking to keep our employees.
You too.
Question?
Yep.
How do our salaries in terms of treasurer and clerk compare? Because you include, if you get health benefits, that's sort of included in the salary, yeah, amount that somebody gets, so. I'm curious.
I know it's public knowledge, but I feel like that should be an executive session, what we're talking about, but it actually, I think, is in the, in the warrant item.
It's a warrant.
Yeah.
So so they're they're.
I'm just curious, not what they're they're making in terms of, but in terms of other towns that are similar.
Yeah, I I think the rate um for the, is it the town clerk or the finance person was, it was like six dollars an hour more. In Wisconsin, for example, that's a bigger town, still a town. Um, I actually asked that question today because I was curious too. Um, and um, and what I was told is, seems like that's hard to get because the jobs vary. And so, you know, we have a unique situation here, and it seems like every town has a unique, like what Dee does. In some towns, the finance person does some of that, or, you know, it's all a mishmash. So it's really hard to compare, but I do know that it that um, I I had just checked Wisconsin, and I think theirs was like six dollars an hour more.
But they're full time, right? Now, I over, no, they're not over thirty two hours a week.
I I think they're twenty five to, yeah, 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 and I'm not positive on that, so don't put me.
They may get other benefits too up there, holidays and whatnot.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I I don't remember the the, like Bristol, when they were advertising again for their their town clerk. Uh, and that was, I think, going to be close to full time, but they were up in that ballpark of sixty thousand.
Yeah, Bristol was, but I think they work for full time, I think.
But in proportion to ours, we're paying uh for the town attorney thirty four thousand for.
Non including benefits.
Non including benefits and for 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 thirty hours a week.
But if we added twenty thousand dollars in benefits, and if we're twenty eight percent raised, then we'd be right up there with them.
We're getting closer.
And they'd be still below that.
Yeah, but they'll also be blowing in terms of the hourly compensation, what other towns are offering, with when you put in the the benefit packages. That's, we, our staff actually are not paid, we actually did, last year we bumped up staff salaries. Part of that was because we had, on the case of the town clerk, uh it was effectively a a training or a uh. A a a salary for somebody who's new, and they said, hey, wait a second, Julie hasn't, isn't new anymore, and she deserves to be paid. Uh, you know, a a a better rate of pay, and and so we we jumped that up last year. Um, and and also with the, a smaller adjustment for uh for the treasurer. Um, I don't think there was much adjustment uh for uh for Dee, Bristol agent.
No, I understand, I'm just saying that, consider, normally, it's, the benefits package is considered part of your salary, so. If a company were offering a job for seventy five thousand, that doesn't mean I'm going to take in seventy five thousand at the end of the year. That might be partially inclusive of my my benefits package and all these other things as well.
No, no, when I made.
Oh, yeah.
When I, when I made, when I made at Turk, I knew that was, they would take out taxes and stuff, but um. What it looked, so, for example, when I hired somebody, and I was gonna hire somebody as a staff member, I had to consider, like, if this is their salary gonna be, it was like. Over a hundred percent more that I had to add. Because that was unseen, but the the um, the company, they were, it's like over and above. Um, because they consider vacations um or everything, but so technically, I would have looked. According to HR, I was making at least twice as much as I was in reality making. But my my salary, if you looked at my salary and what I was charged every, was exactly what was there, and it didn't include my benefits.
So, so then town employees are gonna be making essentially double what they're making now.
I, yeah, I haven't calculated, but 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 good, yeah, 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 I I, yeah, for for us at Turk, it was generally at least add one and a half times amount. So if you made fifty thousand dollars, then you better include another seventy five thousand dollars that took care of benefits. So HR would say, okay, we've hired this person for a hundred twenty five thousand dollars. The person thinks, and is getting fifty thousand dollars, you know, that's, they're they're being deducted from. They're getting the healthcare and whatnot, but that's not part of their fifty thousand dollars. So I don't know how it's, how it's talked about in um, at the town, when the, when the individual that I was reading off, that I made fifty seven thousand, I don't know if that's. Money that she sees, or did she add the two numbers together?
That's the trouble about using the the reference information.
Yeah.
We have.
And everybody, you know, we we've been trying to gather. And everybody, you know, we, we've been trying to gather some information from different places, but they give you, and, and a lot of things are just happening right now, other, other town, um. Town meetings and whatnot, but it seems like they have been passing in other towns, it, it is a, a big issue. And, but I think. You know, having this discussion, this doesn't mean that your taxes are gonna jump up tremendously, um.
The tax is not going up, let's be clear.
I know, I, I was gonna save that for Saturday, um. In fact, I, I think I had done a little calculation and it was like, if, if we went totally full with paying everybody full-time, full benefits. I think it could impact, based on the mill rate, with something like, it was less than a dollar. If everybody paid less than a dollar, increase in taxes. That's how much it would take. To support people having, so it seems like a really big number, but when you talk about, you know, um, put in perspective. Um, what we have to gain versus what we have to lose, I think is, um, important things to look at.
I'm still stewing just about, again, the, the, the difficulty of how to make, uh, the two meet.
Because we have people at different.
We, 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 we came up with a, an amount that we thought could be acceptable to the town, the sixty-one thousand five hundred. Uh, and, and, and so again, that's a discussion we could, could go back and say we wanna get, amend it more. But, but I think again, uh, it's. Difficult to do in one go.
Just out of curiosity, what do you guys think? You're sitting there, I'd, I'd love your opinion. Garrett, I. No, no, you're on Medicare?
Well, Bill.
Quite like me.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so, and, and I bet you appreciate that benefit.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Adam, I don't think you're quite ready yet.
No.
Uh, you don't have gray in that beard.
No.
So what are your thoughts?
I wish I had a chance, I guess.
I'm sorry, it's not offered at home.
But.
But you have benefits, um, Bailey?
Right, yeah, I gave mine privately.
Yeah, 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 just, that's. Yep, yep, I, I did it when I was self-employed too, because you don't want to be without.
There you go.
What do you think, Jim?
I would think in the richest country in the world, everybody would have health benefits.
I know, this is what's really hard, Lisa, what do you?
And this horrible healthcare, oh, I guess, I miss logo.
It's not so affordable.
Yeah, it's not, you know. But if you think that's not affordable and think about what it was beforehand.
You know, I can't imagine. If that is a group rate to the main municipal, I can't imagine what, you know. Especially when they look at, you know, what I've been through.
Yeah, yeah, there's some of your injuries, Lisa, what do you think?
Um.
And you, you, you guys represent the town, I just wanna get a sense for what we might be up against.
More, you know. The, the saying like you always say, well, it's less than a dollar for, for everybody, but there's this, there's that, this, this, and of course it all adds up. But I think it, it also is important to stay. Uh, competitive in, in the, in the world that we're in, which is municipal, in the government, and I think it is important, I agree that, um, employees. You know, you have to take care of them and they'll take care of the town. Um, just going through the, the, the mill of, even, even you guys, right, your term is three years and. There's a, there's a learning curve, right, you maybe get to your, your, your last year and you're kind of up to speed, you know, so hopefully, you know. That continues, it's hard, it's hard when you're constantly, you know, switching things, we can fall through the cracks and things can happen, so. Yeah, and I think that you're, you're delving into it deeply enough to kind of come up with a responsible, uh, solution to that.
I think all three of these employees deserve to be taken care of. They go about and be on, every one of them.
Anybody online, I can't see, um, with Jeff, anybody wanna, anybody online got feedback?
Hi, can I speak to this in my crackly voice? I guess I make a good case for health insurance for constantly being sick. So I just wanted to be clear, the, somebody mentioned the raise in wages and the health insurance. Um, the raise that we're getting or asking for is a cost of living wage, it's so our wages don't go down with inflation. And of course, we look at the whole benefits package, every employee, when they're looking around at jobs, looks at the whole package, wages and benefits together. The problem is that Westport is behind on both. We're behind on wages, we're behind on benefits, the modest cost of living raises we're getting this year will not really make us competitive. But I think on balance with the value of being able to work in your own town and being able to work with people you know. Having a really nice short commute, um, I think, you know, it works out for the employees that we have, because we value that. Um, but we're still not really on par with com- comparative towns and adding the benefits in will get us closer, but it does not get us there. So it's not like we're getting some huge windfall, I just wanna make that clear.
No, thank you, April. Julie, did you have anything to add or comment, um, your perspective? No, okay, she may not be there. All right, um, that, thank, thank you all, just because this is what you're, what we're gonna be facing Saturday.
Well, a different subject, if I might add, on this, some of these taxes, last year we filled out, old people. Fill out a form of, the law, you're taxing, you know, that's still on.
But that's still, as far as I know, the, the law, and indeed, that, that will be reflected in this year's tax, taxes.
So, like, so, because I filled it out last year and the taxes this year will stay the same as they were last year.
Uh, the legislature was looking at changes to the program, one, one thing that I thought was gonna get traction. Was to roll that program into the, uh, senior tax, or, uh. A program that, that abates your taxes for seniors. Uh, and because the difficulty with this program is still for seniors, but the, but any, there's no income cutoff. Right, and, and so one of the concerns is. I don't, I don't need to get into it, but the bottom line is, as far as I know, it's still, it's still there and, and we'll be doing it. Uh, I don't think this, this legislature wanted to take it away, it would have been horrible.
Well, I know they did have to adjust it because it doesn't make any sense.
Well.
Millionaires getting the benefit.
That's the point, and they were trying to fix that part, I don't know if they actually passed it, but this has been a scramble at the end of session.
You have to apply every year, you know that.
What's that?
You have to apply every year.
That's right.
But that's still December, the, the deadline's December, so we got, got time, we, we need to work this out, the bad part is that the state hasn't provided funding. Uh, you know, they promised that they would cover, I think it was up seventy-five percent for the first year, but that was it, after that, there's, we just lose it, as a town, we just lose it. So. But, yeah, but for now, it's, it's on the books for, for this year, as part of what we, we will be doing with the assessing is, is adjusting the, uh. Figuring out how to adjust the tax rate to reflect, reflect that in there.
More unfunded mailage.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, nice thought.
Absolutely.
Poorly drafted legislation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pay here, or you pay here?
Exactly.
Or you pay here?
Yeah, the, the intent was to, to help those who couldn't afford it, and, but.
Yeah, well.
The law is crafted.
Next thing, could be your taxes should stay same, stable.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, well, let me suggest something, um, not a group, but listen, uh, uh, because we, we really do need to have something that we decide, and this is a thing where we decide. We can talk some more Wednesday, but we can't decide.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, so I'd suggest is, is that we say we're gonna, uh, cover, uh, up, up to a hundred percent of, of the individual employees. Um, medical expense, and to say up to, with the idea in mind that if someone, um, wants to opt out. Um, we will pay up to fifty percent of the, of that, if somebody wants to opt out. Uh, one reason why someone might wanna opt out is they can get a better view. If they go and say, I, I'm not gonna get that, sir, I really don't wanna pay the monthly amount I'm gonna have to pay, I'm gonna instead. Uh, go out and, and, and use another plan, but they'll, we, we'll compensate them at least that much. Um, and then the, uh, remaining funds, and that's roughly, there's fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, be used to defray the cost of, of, of family plans, and we'll have to work out the proportions of how to do that. But at least we could, we cover it so that we're, the employees have coverage. Uh, and, uh. And then we will cover a proportion of the, um, the family, uh, expenses, uh, up to the total of the sixty-one thousand five hundred.
I would ask for somebody to offer an alternative amount. Um, because even offering this employee only, you're paying a thousand dollars, up to a thousand dollars, and a family plan is twenty-four, so that's still the fourteen hundred dollars. That is, um, left for, um, somebody to pay.
Yep.
We better pay a better, pretty, pretty high portion of that in order to, to make it worthwhile, um.
What's your question right now?
What, say, say that again, April?
What is the, the question right now, is it defining full-time or is it defining the amount of money to dedicate to this?
Sounds like Jeff is talking about sixty-five, this is top number.
Jeff is still staying with the, that we put it in the warrant.
Right, Donna wants to argue that.
And, and if we stay with that amount, we definitely don't have to cover everyone's family plan.
Yep.
Um, we definitely can cover.
Trying to figure out how do you take that, that. Like it is.
Let's say, again, I don't like this, uh, but I don't, but I think we're stuck between. Adding a, 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 a major expense to town, I think it's the right thing to do. But I also, what, what hopefully was acceptable, uh, at least at first, got it for the town this year. And we haven't worked through this enough, uh, because again, if you're in a business, you don't necessarily take the maximum for every employee, because employees don't, don't choose the same thing. And so people opt out, so in a, in a business, we wouldn't, uh, we'd have some history to go by. And be able to, uh, know based upon history what, uh, our, our costs are likely to be. Um, we don't really know how, in, in individuals, I don't wanna push anybody, uh, in advance about how they, as they look at their options and look at what they have to contribute. How they might choose to, uh, um, to, to take the insurance. Want them to, to be covered, want our staff to, to have the opportunity to be healthy. Without substantial personal expense.
See, ideally, if we could at least have up to seventy-five thousand, then we could have offered like up to, um. Even two thousand doesn't pay for a family plan, but it's closer.
Close, and, and some amount, again, this is a, a personal opinion, I think, point made, but. Common with, with in private business, the employee pays a portion of the cost. Uh, and so I, I think again. I, I've also been saying at the point that I don't think we have necessarily a better salary here. So it's, it's, if you look at the package that they face, it's not apples to apples with, with private business. But some amount of employee, uh, contribution, um. I'd like to think could, could, could work, uh, for the employees as well as the town.
So we, you can't change this amount tonight anyways, because it's already in the warrant, it would have to be changed at town meeting.
Exactly.
And, and we need a, we need a policy that, that gets us at least going in, if this is what gets us, we may not get the sixty-one five.
Okay.
And, and, and that's, uh, that's also a, a concern, uh, we'd have to then figure out how, any other number or no number, what we do.
Yeah.
We can propose to amend it upward. And as, as I said, I, Donna, I plugged in, if we set thirty-five hours as the base and we ratioed everyone's, uh, based upon thirty-five hours as the base. It comes to seventy thousand, a hundred and fifty-four dollars.
About nine thousand.
Nine thousand one. So, so that's. That's a better, uh, situation.
Yeah, and that's why I was asking all of you, because trying to get a sense for what might happen Saturday, is everybody gonna be opposed, is people supportive, what's, uh. It's a sense that, um. I, I just feel like it's critical to support the staff. Now, what we're actually doing away with one of the, um, physicians on the board, not the physician, but the, the.
The stipend.
The stipend, yeah, but it, it was like a position, a title or something, um, to save a little bit of money. So, uh, we aren't gonna have a board of assessors, um, I know that doesn't save a lot, but does a little bit. Um, and like Jeff had said earlier, we, we're, everybody else gets a cost of living increased except for the board. So it's not like. We've got anything to gain from this, to me, we have a lot to gain, though, by having good staff. Uh, and that's really the, the, the key issue, so, um.
You can take the health insurance with their. With their pay, and you're still. In the ballpark, I would wonder maybe a very, like you said, seventy thousand in all of them.
Yeah.
Plus the fifteen hundred a month.
What's that?
Plus the fifteen hundred a month.
Right, so, but if they take the health insurance, you wouldn't pay that fifteen hundred a month, you'd pay. You're all sixty thousand plus fifteen hundred, yeah, so, see, we're still way under with all of this, right?
Yeah, yeah, and all is not that far away.
Right, and there are ten.
There's some.
Population and area was.
Yeah.
Doing, uh, mileage wise, I should say, a measured mileage, uh, pretty quick with. I think nobody wants a part of a dollar, but I think it'd be money well spent.
Look, I, I would be, uh, uh, open to the idea, again, at, at the planet, at their town, I need to, to propose it, to amend the mark to the seventy thousand, one fifty-four.
That would make me happy.
But I think going in, we have a false, if we get what we, what we, we submitted, um, to go back to that, um, I just.
Thirty-five FTE and then do a proportion based on that.
Well.
Is what, what, how you come up with a seventy thousand.
That's, that's right, that's basically just a proportion of, of, of a thirty-five FTE.
That, that, that feels, um, better, feels better than what, what it's feeling right now. So. This is, so. I'm gonna make. A proposal before anybody changes their mind.
Well, don't, don't. I'm saying, I, we won't, but it's not, that's not the policy for now.
No.
Or we, we'd have a policy for the sixty-one five.
Yeah, I keep calling it a policy, I feel like it's a policy, I feel like it's sort of a, a plan.
Well, if that, if that's what gets, uh, we, we explain, where did this come from, it came originally from a forty hour.
Yep.
Uh, FTE.
Yeah, no, I, I, I wanna make sure we can explain all that, but I, I won't think of it as a policy, I think it was just, it's a plan.
Okay. Call a plan, call a plan.
I'm happy with the plan.
Five, this is how we would manage it.
Yeah, yeah.
But we'd like seventy thousand.
Yep. So I would make a proposal, so we can go home tonight, is that I propose that we, uh, consider. A plan for the sixty-one five, um, that we would pay employees a hundred percent and then a portion, um, of the family. And we would let people opt out if they choose to and pay them fifty percent.
Of the individual.
Of the individual, and. Part of that, uh, I'll go off of the stage that, um. The, yes, write it down.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll go in a minute, and that, uh, we also would like to propose upping, uh, asking for, um. An, an amendment, a, a change to, an amendment to the article. To reflect seventy thousand, so that the FTE would be based on thirty-five hours instead of forty hours. And we would still pay a hundred percent for the employee and fifty percent, um, of the employee if they opted out. So the difference between the sixty-one five and the seventy thousand. Or maybe not exact numbers, but is based on whether the FTE is a hundred percent, uh, forty hours or thirty-five hours. And Bailey, you had your hand raised? Oh, oh, okay, all right, um, do I have a second? Oh, oh, okay, all right. Um, do I have a second on that?
Everybody paid another dollar.
That was, I, that was giving an, a number, if we went up to, like, if everybody paid, like, got uh, their full benefits paid.
Right.
It would impact about a dollar.
That's a dollar per thousand?
Per person, actually, we had figured out.
If your taxes are two thousand dollars, this would make it two thousand and one.
No, yeah, 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 because we just did a rough estimate, we didn't say, you know, some people pay more taxes. Yeah, yeah. Because it's pretty much a thousand per person is what we had played with, and I don't have the numbers with me anymore, but it wasn't a significant amount. You know, often when we talk about something costing a lot, and then you look, put in perspective, and you say, okay, there are nine hundred people that are paying taxes on this island. And you're, you know, they're not all paying the same amount, but, um, but just to give a sense for. Uh, how much it really does impact.
Well, uh, uh, as you say, I think, uh. Off, of, uh, roughly, it's, uh. Twenty three hundred dollars per mill rate. Per, per penny on the bill rate. That, that's based on, uh, currently, we're, we have an, uh, eight percent. And taxes are, uh. We're, we're got the math, but I believe it, it would work out uh, to about twenty three hundred dollars. For point on the bill rate. So if you, if you have a property that's a hundred thousand dollars. And we go up, um, one penny on the mill rate. Think, you know, maybe only pay two hundred thirty dollars, I'm sorry, two hundred thirty dollars. Doesn't sound right.
No.
I'm sorry, it's, it's a trial by doing this, is, you know, we haven't done, we haven't done our homework and the math in advance.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, we were just sort of tossing out numbers. So, do I have a second for my proposal?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you were gonna ask another question, Gary, I just, I just wanna make sure the proposal got, um, so we can.
I'll just, the biggest thing in a town meeting, people don't wanna know how much a tax.
Yeah.
Let me walk through this benefit. Only get the dollar things.
And, and we will say that upfront, that, that, um, taxes are not gonna go up. If, if everything on this was approved, and I think even if we went up to seventy thousand, instead of sixty one thousand, your taxes will not.
If we went up a hundred and fifty thousand, it, I don't think, I think we've, uh, because of. Some of the opportunities we've had, uh, with our, uh, not spending money this year. Uh, we've got a substantial amount of money that's slopping over into, we used to call it the carry forward. It's, it's, it's gone into, going into surplus, in effect, and then we're just taken out of surplus again. So because of that, if you looked at the, uh, the total, we're spending about as much planned this year in the budget as we did last year. And we haven't gotten in all the new assessments, and we have a lot of new property, new value to bring in. So that new value is gonna tend along the tax rate, and yet we're spending with the, the sixty one five, just about the same amount as we did last year. So yeah, no, we consciously trying to, to track it, so we did not raise taxes. And, and one of the things we're gonna be able to do is we're gonna pay off phase two of the payment. So we were able to do that, so we don't have to borrow that money that's coming up this year. That's the reason why the budget's lower, we were able to, 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 to find the. The, the, the money, uh, to pay for the bathing.
So no interest.
Yeah, so no, no interest comes.
Yeah, so, so we will say that upfront, early at, at the town meeting, because you, you're right, that's exactly what people need to hear. They're, they're gonna worry every penny, and it's like, wha- what's this gonna do for my taxes? And, um, it's not gonna do anything.
And, and so, yeah, that's right, adding up seventy thousand, it's, it's nothing. It's, it's not even in, in, in the overall picture of the budget.
But it could save staff.
Well, absolutely.
So, I would like to make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
I, I, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, good. I was getting nervous for a second, wait a minute, what's this?
We're going to see what else is there, because anyone else is there. Okay.